I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. We're just about a minute away from beginning the meeting. Before we do, I would invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then Brian Powell will bring the invocation.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation by God and the mission of liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me? Father, we love you and we thank you so much for the blessings you give to us every day. Thank you for all the provisions, thank you for the freedoms that you've given us, and we just never want to take advantage of that, Father. We just thank you for it. Ask you to be with us tonight as we deliberate decisions for the city, give us wisdom, discernment, Father, and may it just bring all glory into the name of Jesus. In His name we pray. Amen. Amen. Thanks, Brian. All right. I'd like to now officially welcome you to tonight's regular meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. I'll call the meeting to order. And we do have large printed agendas over there. Found a coke? Oh, we don't have them. Denise has got some, so if that would be helpful to you, you can walk right up here in front of everybody and get one. Pass those over to... We'll have them over there if anyone would like a large print agenda. There you go. And I believe we'll start off now by asking the city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Kevin Flores.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Here.
Curtis Page.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Can you guys turn your volume up a little bit? Do you all have it big there? Can you... Everybody hear me all right? Can y'all... Y'all need to turn me up any? I doubt it. Okay. Maybe I just wasn't into the microphone. All right. We're at item four, comments from citizens. If we have any residents that would like to address the council, the council sets aside time each meeting for... to hear comments from our residents. We ask that you only... that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand the council won't be taking action on anything that you have to bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Richard Bowman is my name. And I've asked again to come to the council meeting on behalf of the B Battery First 142nd Field Artillery rededication of our plaque a week from Saturday, May the 22nd, from 11 to 1:00. Like to formally invite the whole council down if you would like to come. We've got everything lined up. I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to Mike, Chad Wolf, G&amp;G Concrete, Steve Graham and Dennis Graham have got the pad poured. We're going to mount the deal next week. And the day of the dedication, we will slide the plaque in at that time and lock it down. We don't want to do it beforehand. I've talked to Loretta at the paper, she's helping us out on that, getting that all put out to the public. And if I could ask if the council could put something out on their website to see if we can't reach a little bit more. There is 88 gentlemen on the plaque itself. I've dropped... I've put feelers out, social media, everything, trying to get everybody that I can reach that I know where they're at and other people that know where they're at. So I've come in contact, it's been 30 years since I've talked to some of them, so it's going to be a happy reunion. And I know I've talked to you, Mayor, that all of you are invited to come down. And if you would, we want them to stay in Springdale that afternoon and go visit our shops and everything, hopefully get the word out to that. But I want to thank again Mayo Sheet Metal for building it, Larry Harrison in West Salem Springs for painting it and all that, and we'll retalk about that at the dedication itself. Yes?
Just for people that might not know, this is the plaque that was originally at the Armory.
At the National Guard Armory down here on Sunset. It... Once they built the readiness center at... out by the airport in Bentonville, they closed this, it's now Arkansas Department of Corrections. We had to remove the plaque at that time. So it took me about a year to find it. I found it and started this about two years ago and decided to do it on the time or pretty close to the time we come back from Operation Desert Shield Desert Storm. And that was in late May. It's pretty close to about the same date. We're going to do this the 22nd, somebody... one of the guys told me it's the 21st when we got back.
Okay.
Back into Springdale. So I'm looking forward to it and hope all of you can come.
This is down just down...
Oh, okay.
Next block over.
Yeah. It's one block down. If you know where the deal for the Butterfield Trail is at, it's the same walkway that that goes up to that, it's right there on the left. And when you leave tonight, if you go that way, you'll see a cone sitting on top of the concrete with the pad that we're putting it at.
Good deal.
But I appreciate everybody and thank you for letting me come. Mike, a big thanks to you and a big thanks to Chad. He said he didn't have anything on the dock tonight, so thank you very much.
What time does it take place on that side?
11 to 1:00 roughly. We do have Jill Dabs, we have contacted her. We've got the Shallow Square if it rains, so we do have that. If it's raining, we will do it down there and then we'll probably have the plaque there and then bring it up and put it in.
Good deal.
But I appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Other comments from citizens? Sure. Melinda?
Live on West Allen Avenue, right off Holcomb. Been here since 1952. Sam and I received this notice on Thursday, April 15th, in our mailbox, a little Mickey Mouse half sheet of paper that is turning our world upside down. I would like to... It's requesting comments on the investors and the property at 326 Holcomb that Mr. Daniel Hints is the face of the multiple investors. The name of this is to be Baja's Bistro and Beer Garden. And these are excerpts from my comments to the ABC. Whatever cutesy, unpronounceable name chosen, it's a bar in my backyard. In the past few months, I've lost my precious mother to congestive heart failure and my baby sister to kidney failure and pneumonia. And now we're contending with this. Sam and I bought our home and it was built in 1949. It is unique to all of Northwest Arkansas. I have not seen another like it. On West Allen in April of 1985, we had to work on it ourselves for five months before it was even livable. It had been a rental. Livable for our young family of five. Sam began his CPA practice in downtown Springdale and we were just blocks away from his office. And now we've been here 35-plus years. It is incompatible and inappropriate to thrust this upon us with the too loud music and conversations, carousing, coming and going with car door slamming and car door remotes chirping. Be aware, in the last three weeks, we and our neighbors have called the police 11 times due to the noise generated there, and it's not officially open yet. Operating a bar directly across the street from Springdale Salvation Army outpost and Worship Center is counterproductive to their efforts and inroads to help their clients battling to resist and recover from alcohol and drug addictions. Additionally, my husband Sam's grandfather became an alcoholic at an early age while working in a country club, leaving his wife and two daughters destitute financially and emotionally. My father, my grandmother struggled with an affinity for Scotch until she fell while drinking, badly twisting her leg and lying helpless in her home for two days before she was discovered. My father, a Springdale M.D., worked diligently for 30 years before succumbing to Alzheimer's disease to help all... to help alcoholics get dry, stay dry, and salvage their family and work lives. We understand that not everyone who chooses to drink alcohol is going to become an alcoholic, but there's no denying that that first drink is the portal to the possibility. With our background, we've had neither desire for nor association with alcohol in our 50-year marriage and do not welcome this intrusion that will so drastically and detrimentally affect us, our neighbors, and our older established neighborhood. Now, there's been a lot of talk about being woke. These young strivers have awakened and think they have discovered something new in living near your workplace, and that being downtown. Sam and I bought our house in April of 85, ironically. The realtors that discouraged us are the very ones that are now investing like mad in the buildings downtown. For 35 years, I've been walking to the banks, we have multiple accounts, not that much money, the post office, the Shiloh Museum, Cisco for visitations, to the park on Grove Street, now with eight grandchildren, parades on Emma Avenue at the Fourth of July, whatever it is now, rodeo, you know, Christmas parades, the depot for the Christmas train ride with the grandson, and more recently to catch the trails to the creek. We can actually walk and get somewhere. We were paying attention when the form-based code business was going on. I understand that months and months and hours and hours of work went into this, and yes, I have a copy and yes, I have read it multiple times. We did not understand and grasp the personal implications and ramifications of what this has brought to us, and no one could conceive of the little second-story balcony on Dr. Hall's combo clinic and residence built in the 40s that has become party central on the second floor. And their music and carousing and clapping and live music is broadcast for three and four blocks through our neighborhood in every direction. We tout our desire for inclusivity while catering almost exclusively to the millennials, the Xers, and the Yers with zero consideration for those of us owner-occupied homeowners who are already here. Our neighbors, after living on Success, that's a street, for 30 years, bought this little empty lot right behind us and built a sweet little infill house, just what you all are wanting to happen, behind me specifically because Robert had a serious heart condition on top of other conditions and wanted to be near the hospital. A couple next door to this family have required multiple ambulance runs in the four to five years they've been there. Sam has had six heart bypasses, and it has become advantageous for us to be near the hospital. We've planned for everyone but those of us who are already here and have legitimate health needs to be near the hospital and the Jones Clinic. About the noise, when Patsy first showed us the drawings of what was to come, without hesitancy, she said, "Well, Melinda, we have noise ordinances. Well, they are low priority and the police do everything they can to address as quickly as they can our issues." But you can understand, they have bigger fish to fry. Not a week goes by that we aren't receiving texts, calls, and emails pestering us to sell our property. Our friends have said, "Start packing." Well, we can't replicate what we have here. Mature trees, destination walking options, and proximity to immediate health crisis attention. We are losing our peace, our privacy, and our property. And for what? Another playground option for the young and the restless. You've created this conundrum, now let's figure out how to make it work. And I will end with this. I thought Springdale's catchphrase was the center of it all. Art, like beauty, is in the eye of the beholder. But with the looks of things, we could rebrand our city in hopes that if we paint it, they will come. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to 4B, and I'll ask Angie to come forward. I want to introduce to you Angie Albright. It's my pleasure to introduce our incoming Shiloh Museum Director, Alan, who is here, but she's hiding over there. Alan is, as we all know, has submitted her resignation in about a month from today, pretty close, right, Alan? And I... Let me say first that I'm very... I much... very much appreciate the museum board for including me in the interviews. And we interviewed some very, very well-qualified candidates, but I'm pleased to introduce Angie, who is the choice, and we're looking forward to you. Angie, you've already been a part of the museum.
Right.
And just say anything you'd like to say, and obviously I know if there are any questions, you entertain those.
Okay. Well, I'm just excited for this opportunity and I'm excited to work with the city and with the chamber and with our community to... as we recover from the pandemic and the loss of tourism and visitation, and we're going to be working hard to help the city make its way back. And I'm just... I'm excited to be here and I am a fan of what Shiloh Museum does, and so I'm looking forward to leading that effort.
Great.
Thanks.
Any questions for Angie? Well, again, congratulations and we look forward to working with you and I know you're going to do great things at the museum.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Angie.
Welcome.
All right. Item five is the approval of minutes. Council, you've had access to those. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to look over them. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I move for A and B.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Chair 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Item seven, we have a... I'll go ahead and read it, a resolution authorizing the temporary operation of a carnival conducted by Cross Church located at 1709 Johnson Road. That's going to be from May 26th and 27th of this year.
I move the resolution pass.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments or... We do have, I think someone from Cross Church is here. Yes, and if you have any questions? Okay. Anyone in the audience? Okay. Roll call.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Chair 7-0.
Thank you. Item seven... I'm sorry, that was item seven. Item eight, a resident... and I'll read this also, and Heath, you may want to come. A resolution authorizing the temp... the temporary oper... Heath, you're operating a carnival. A resolution appointing Heath Ward...
Yes, I am.
Yeah. To the Board of Directors. It's a six-year term expiring on 12/31/2026 of the Northwest Arkansas Conservation Authority, or NACA. And this is... You're being appointed to fill the vacancy left by Chris Weiser, whose term has expired. And I asked Heath to consider being appointed to this. He... Obviously, we all know Heath and respect his work at the Springdale Water Utilities and with some of the big decisions that NACA will face and how they may impact Springdale. I think having Heath and Rick's the other Springdale representative on there, Rick Pulveretti, I think it'll be very beneficial to us. And I... And I've also got to say, I know he couldn't be here tonight, but thank Chris Weiser for his many years. I believe he's been on this NACA board since it was established, I think.
I believe so.
And Chris has done great work for a long time and he just felt like it was time for him to step down. And so Heath, I've read the resolution. Do you have anything to add?
No. I appreciate the confidence in the mayor has placed in me and our utility, and I can promise that I will represent the interest of our city on that board.
Good deal. Thank you, Heath.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions from anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Chair 7-0.
Congratulations.
Thanks again, Heath.
Thank you. You know, have a good evening. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And our time for discussion on the... or a resolution on the Community Development Block Grant Program Committee, and the chairman is Kevin Flores. So Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Item nine on today's agenda is a resolution adopting and approving the 2021 program year for the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG program. We discussed this a month ago. There's a 30-day notice published and at issue is probably page 44, 44, I believe? But while we look for that, can you guys get a rundown? Patsy and Dean?
What is included in your packet is the actual printout of what we have to submit electronically to HUD because we don't do paper applications anymore. We do everything through what's called IDIS. So I put up here kind of a summary of what the program is and the kinds of things we've been doing over the last several years. As Jeff Watson reminded me last time, our emphasis has been on housing rehab and we haven't changed that. So basically, we started out with an anticipated grant of about $793,071. Part of the process is to take applications from nonprofit organizations in the city that would be able to provide public services. And over the years, the number of applications we have received have increased. I think this is... this year's probably the most we've ever received, but if you remember, we had COVID money to be used through CDBG, and we really reached out to a lot more organizations trying to get the money to help the citizens of Springdale with COVID. So I think that kind of awakened some of them to what we've been doing over the years and brought us in a few more applications. So our original proposal that was presented to you last month and was out for public comment was to put 52, 51.79% of the money into housing rehab, which is $410,726. We received applications for $107,345, which is roughly 13.54%. $75,000 is what we've put into program and administration for the last 10, 15, maybe even 20 years. We are allowed to put up to 20% what we've never used that amount. And the additional $200,000 for public facilities for projects we have discussed that may come up in the very near future that we could provide alternative transportation capabilities for a housing project. With that puts us at $793,071. Now, I have to tell you that the grant amount may change because they just tell us that's what it's going to be until Congress actually does the appropriations. They send us the grant agreement, then we figure out what to do with it. We always have to adjust things one way or the other. Most of the time, we do if it's minor adjustments in the housing rehab program. At the discussion at the last meeting, we talked about bringing the amount for public services back to the 10%, which was a policy we've kind of looked at for several many years. The easiest way to do that was to reduce each of the applications that we received by a set amount. So you'll see at the bottom, that would reduce it down to the amounts that are set for each one of the funding agencies, if we are in fact wanting to get down to that 10% level. The other option that you have is determine which ones you want to fund and which ones you don't want to fund. That is not a decision that's made at the staff level. That is a decision that you guys make. As again, I can say, it hasn't happened very many times that we had to not fund someone. We will not bring you applications from public services organizations that can't meet HUD criteria for use of the funds. And I can say without a doubt that we have had many, many years of no findings because of the way we've operated our program for many, many years, and that hasn't changed. So basically, that's what all those documents in your packet tells you. It just has to be in HUD's format. So the title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Program Year for the Community Development Block Grant Program." And I can answer any questions or...
Move the resolution pass.
Dean's here to answer questions. And that would be with the allocation that we brought to you with the...
With 10%.
Okay.
How much? With the 10%...
10% cap on the...
10% cap on our... on the nonprofits.
With each of the applications being reduced by the amount that showed at the bottom. Okay.
Okay. We have a motion.
We had a motion.
And second. Okay. Any further discussion?
Do we have any nonprofits that are potential or recipients that want to speak on this?
Well, we do have the nonprofits here if anybody wants to speak to it. I think you were provided previously the information that we received from them when they indicated what this impact would have on those, but if you want to hear from any of them, they're here today if you want to talk about that. I'm sorry. Okay. Do y'all want to hear comments? That's really your choice.
Sure. I think we should. They've come and...
Sure.
Certainly.
Yes.
Thank you for taking the time. I promise I'll keep it very brief. My name is Rachel Cox. I'm the Executive Director of Compassion House, and I want to say thank you, for starters, for considering our proposal and for funding us last year and the consideration for this year. I know that it's going to be really challenging to decide, you know, maybe 10%, 13 and 1/2%. And I know historically, the 10% has been what you've gone through. And I know that with allocations with COVID, it's tough to figure out, do... Does it go to housing renovations for Springdale? Does it go to these nonprofits? And both are worthwhile causes. I will tell you across the board with nonprofits, the reason why I want to stand before you and just advocate for one minute is because our nonprofit specifically, we've been around for 30 years. We're the only nonprofit in Arkansas. We specifically help these girls in Springdale who go to Harbor High School in WTI that are pregnant and parenting teens. All the other nonprofits here are worthwhile as well. We took a 70% hit last year with our individual business and church giving. hit last year with our individual business and church giving, because everybody took a hit. And so, we're not out of that. The only reason we were able to make up some of that gap was because of COVID funding and was because of CDBG funding. We're not out of the weeds. So $4,000 doesn't seem like a lot probably to you guys, but $4,000 is a fourth of our month's expenses. So I mean, that's, that's huge for a small nonprofit like us. So, and I know there's other ones that could probably say the same. And I won't keep any more of your time, but I'll just say, you know, I know $28,000 is what you're talking about between the two. That might be a big difference for your renovations, but man, that, that's huge for us little guys out here that are really struggling still. Thanks.
Thank you. I've got a, come on, I've got a question for Dean or Patsy. I know we've run into situations recently having trouble spending our, what we've set aside for housing rehab. I'm not asking you to give us a, I mean, that's looking into a crystal ball, but are, do, first of all, do you think we will be able to spend it? And if not, when would we know that? And I know the council, we've done it before, where the council could go back and add that money. I mean, we know we want to spend the money, right? So can you give us kind of a sense of what that might be like?
Well, I can tell you, we're in better position than we have been for a while. We have two people working rehab. Right now, we have two contractors. In the past, we only had one. We've been able to get another one brought up who can do the work. We're finding plenty of places that need the work to be done. One of the challenges with that is when we have someone who sells a house, who passes away and that gets passed on, we get money back. And that money has to go back into housing rehab. So we have to use it first. So it looks like we have more money than we have, but we work through that money as quickly as, as possible. I truly believe with the staff I have now and the contractors that we have there, we're going to be able to spend the money. There are still a lot of houses in Springdale that need to be worked on. But again, the cost of one house, $28,000. Is it going to make a difference one way or another? That's the decision you all have to make.
So Patsy, the 3.5 increase from the 10% is 28,000. That's, given the increase in, in material cost, that's roughly the...
Maybe one house.
Yeah. So when it comes to a CDBG-covered home, or a, a home that's a recipient of CDBG funding, if you sell that house, does the city give back any money? And when does it?
Let me explain how you work. It is a 10-year forgivable note on that house that's filed as a lien. If they stay there 10 years, they have to pay nothing back. If it is sold prior to that, with a death, or somebody moves, whatever percentage is left of that comes back into the housing rehab fund. And with HUD's regulations, that program income has to be used first. You can't put it anyplace else. You can't move it to public services, or public facilities, or administration, or anything else. It has to go back into what it was used for. So we've had that over the years, but I think, I truly believe we are in a position to do it better than we have in quite some time.
And so, that money can only be used towards rehab. How much of that money of selling back, or how much money do we have from that fund of houses that were sold that still were within the 10-year frame?
Well, how much do we have out there? Or how much do we have that's been paid back? You'll have to tell, I don't keep track of all the dollars, down to the dollar.
So we also get money from Swept Co. in Black Hills. So every house we get right around 1,200 to 1,500. So at this time, we have 53,000 sitting in our PI account. So I have to use all that money before I even touch the grant money. Because every three months, I have to do a cash on hands to HUD. And if I'm over a certain amount of money, then the mayor gets nasty ground.
So...
Let me do add, though, that we've always been good at getting all the re, all the rebates that we can get. They will take window frames and recycle material and put all that stuff in there to put as much money into housing rehab as we can over the years. We do some volunteer programs with church groups and others in the summertime, and we buy paint and supplies and stuff, so we can get some house painted, some things that we can get done that you can't use rehab money for. So we've always used the money very well, and we're continuing to do that. And again, I'll say, I think we're in a better position to continue this program and make it stronger than we were two or three years ago.
How is, and I'm going to ask you something I should know, but how is the, how is each project determined, the cap on it? Because I, the reason I ask is because with, with prices going up the way we've seen it, are we going to be able to do fewer houses with this amount of money than we would have been otherwise?
Well, the cap was set by the council at 40,000. And we just increased it to 40,000 during this last year because of the cost of materials going up. And we also started using houses that are younger than what we, older, younger?
We didn't go back.
Whichever. Whichever direction it is, younger. So that we have more to work. Some that are 25 years old, you know, we need to start working on those. So we'll have to wait and see if 40,000 is going to be enough. If it's not, because of prices, we may have to come back and ask you all, can we make some adjustments? Now, there may be a couple of times where, where a few thousand dollars over, because when you get into a housing rehab, you don't always know what you're getting into. We try to bring them up to code first, heat and air, fix the windows, put the roof on. And sometimes, it's just, you don't know what you're getting into. So.
Well, and one thing, Patsy, based on your, the track record you have is the reason why we continually get substantial funding from HUD because of the administration of this program. And it's always been done well.
And I can tell you, we just found out today, we don't have to have an audit this year because they didn't find anything the last time they were here, and so they put us off for two more years. So, and that doesn't always happen. It's because I have a good team that does a good job. And we don't fight the organization. We do it the way it's supposed to be done. We follow the regulations. And I'll tell you, some of them are kind of dumb, but you got to do it this way, and this way, and this way. And that's the way we do it. So.
So Patsy?
By keeping it at 10%, the, always revisit it later.
We could, if we have money left over. Yeah.
I think there is, and I said it, the committee mayor touched on, I think the uncertainties for me of the expense and what it's going to cost us to do these houses, who knows where it's going to be. And I'm not at all against nonprofits, but I just think it's wise for us to be careful, and we can all, if I can amend it, and certainly hand out money.
Lumber's up 300%. Copper's up 250%.
Most houses we've done already, they're right between 20, between 28 and 38.
You need to come up here. Sorry.
Most of the houses we've done since last year have been between 28 to about 35. We just hit one that hits about 41, just because of the age and everything. But that's typically what we do. And so I get calls when title companies saying, hey, we have a house that's for sale, and, or it's going to be sold. So right now, we probably have another 25,000 coming to us because another house is being sold. So there's more money coming to us.
So you can use that money anytime a house goes over the, the cap, you can use that?
Well, I have to use, so I have to use PI now. So no matter what happens, emergencies, we do, we're doing a lot of emergencies. I mean, I think we had four emergencies last week. We're trying to get done. So I mean, we're doing a lot of emergencies, a lot of HVAC systems, a lot of roofs, just a lot of stuff like that. And I have to use the PI first. I can't even touch the, the grant just for, I can use the grant just for admin, and that's it. But I have to use everything for PI right now, until that's basically gone.
I had a comment for you, Patsy. So we have a balance on, on rebates and, and the sale of homes that receive CDBG fund, and it's around 52.3, you said? That's not included in the 410,000 that...
No.
Right.
No.
So that's an additional towards rehab.
Right.
And that's roughly two homes, roughly, right?
Could be. And we never know when we're going to get money back in. I mean, that's not something that we can plan for, budget for. You never know what's going to be sold, what, what's going to happen out there. We just have to deal with the money when it comes in.
But that's also roughly one home and roughly the 3.5 additional percent that...
Could be, yes. Yes.
And let me just state, regardless of how we vote here tonight, I think this is one of the few instances in government where, no matter what, we're directly helping out somebody in the community, and I think that's great.
Nick Robbins, Executive Director, returning home. I want to thank you so much for all the support you've given in the last 12, 16 months to all the nonprofits in Northwest Arkansas. I do a lot of going to meetings with the county. It's brutal. Really appreciate you guys and, and your heart and how easy the meetings are. So we don't want to speak negatively about any program, because, you know, like Kevin said, it's, it's all positive. It's all helping our community. Just what I want to point out is, right now, we've got a list of people, of programs that are helping, our veterans that have come home, our individuals that are needing food every day, our individuals that are struggling with mental health and health problems, individuals, children that need to have a representation in, in court proceedings, and, and some, some children in our community that are needing extra help. And to know that that $30,000, when, in the nonprofit's hands, I guarantee that'll at least serve 1,000 people. Or we could say $30,000 is going to help a couple in a home. So right now, it's kind of hard to go, hey, could we have more? Because you blessed us so much with the COVID resources. But I just know when we go roll into next year, and all there is for the, for the nonprofits in Springdale is $80,000 or $79,000 sitting there to split up amongst all the nonprofits, that's going to be a tough sell. Five years ago, when I was applying for this, there was only three of us that even showed up, that even filled out an application. And now, because of your staff connecting with the community, a lot of people are aware, and a lot of people are embracing our community and serving them so well during this time. So actually, please just consider the, the greater picture of the amount of good that happens in our community, and when the, the the level of services not being met if, if a nonprofit has to close. And a $4,000 could be a quarter of somebody's budget, and that could mean closing or not. And so that's drastically changing people's lives when that other home could be done by its extra resources that come in from another source, or be done next year. So just, just please consider that when, when you're looking at the grand scheme. Thanks.
Thanks, Nate.
So I got a question for Ernest procedurally. So we got a motion and a second on the 10%. Do we vote on that first, and then move on to the 13.5%? Or do I make a motion for the 13.5%?
We need to, we'll have to, we'll have to vote on the motion. It's been properly seconded, right?
Trying to offer an amendment to the motion?
The amendment would be to move it to 13.5.
Got a motion and a second on the 10%. Has to be voted on first and then second.
Yeah, we can go ahead and continue to take comments, though, as, before we vote. I mean, I'm...
And, and our vote, the no would be against the 10%.
Right.
Correct.
Right. Go ahead.
My name is Joshua Bland. I serve as the Director of Missions and Outreach at First Church Springdale and the Director of the Bread of Life. I want to say a special thank you to all the members of the council, to leadership of the city of Springdale, and especially to the leadership of the community development operation. We are so grateful for the work that all of you do. I just want to add to, and really, really echo another perspective to what Nick said. We have a very blessed community. We are blessed with nonprofits who come alongside the work that you all are doing, who come alongside other organizations throughout our community to make a real difference. And for us at Bread of Life, as we've been in partnership with community development over these last few years, all of the funding that we have received has gone to families who are facing eviction or utility shut-off. None of it is used for operating, none of it is used for staffing. It is all going to specific families. And in, in all fairness, a lot could be done with $20,000. That goes a long way. But that $4,000 reduction, on average, and I had sat down with Dean over the phone initially when he called me, and then we, we got together and we really crunched these numbers, that $4,000 reduction, certainly it could be used to help with one house to make a difference for one family. But in the way we use it in our ministry, the way we use it in our outreach to serve the community, that could serve up to 10 to 12 families with the average household size right now that we're seeing being about 4.5 members per family. It makes a real difference. Every dollar that you allot does. And I say that not just on behalf of Bread of Life, but on behalf of every organization represented here, and those that are not with us this evening. So I know it is a tough decision, and I am immensely grateful to each of you for the stewardship that you have in our city, and the difference that it makes. Know that it does make a real difference in the lives of families. And I can speak only for myself definitively, but knowing my colleagues who are here, I feel certain and confident that I say this for them as well. Whatever your decision is, we're going to make the most of it to continue to impact the lives and to benefit families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Judd Sinnington. I'm the CEO of Community Clinic here in Springdale and throughout Northwest Arkansas. And I, without rehashing what my predecessors have said, I want to, again, extend our gratitude and just simply acknowledge that, you know, this is a, a very challenging situation, because it's going to help no matter what we do, and, and really looking at what can get that greatest impact. And I know from community clinic standpoint, as we look at the impact of, of COVID and this last year on our, many of our patients, that has been a very dramatic issue. What we use this, these dollars for specifically are to help with transportation costs to get to and from our clinic, to be able to get to those healthcare appointments. That has been such a huge impact this, this last year for our patients. And, and this is a way in which we can contribute to our patients' health, the city of Springdale's community health. And so that, that $4,000 impacts about 160 visits. So that, that makes a difference as, as we look at these numbers. So again, realizing that there's a lot of uncertainty to this, but at the end, we appreciate the opportunity and to make an impact no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay?
Mayor, if I could have a second, I, you know, I, this year, with the struggles we've gone through as a city, as a country, I feel that the greater good in the, in amount of people that you can reach with some of these funds could outweigh some of the, the building projects. That's just, I feel in my heart that, that that could be something that we could look at this year. Because like they've been saying, they're helping, could be thousands of people with the amount of money that we are helping, maybe a couple or, and not that that help is overlooked in any way. But, you know, I just feel like the community could better be served with the money in the nonprofit's hands this year. And that's just my, and I know we have to take a vote, so.
Okay. Thanks, Randall. Any other comment before we vote?
I got one more comment. Bear with me. So, and I don't mean this in a condescending way at all to the nonprofits here, but this 3.5% goes along with what Randall's saying. Given what we as a society and as a community have been through this past year, year and a half almost, I think it's deserved. It's merited to the direct work that you guys do. But it's nothing that should be relied, relied upon in the future regardless of what happens today. The 3.5 is an increase just given the circumstances, but I, I don't want, and again, I don't mean this in a condescending way, I don't want a nonprofit thinking or relying upon that in the future, that, those additional funds. That's to be revisited. But just given the circumstances, my personal thought is, and it sounds like potentially Randall's, that it is merited just given the circumstances.
Okay. So to be clear, the motion, the motion before us is the 10% cap on the, on the nonprofits and the rest going to rehab. All right, I'll, Jeff, go ahead.
So it was in the paper yesterday, I believe, about stimulus money that's coming to the city of Springdale. And when and how do we decide how that is to be spent?
Well, we're trying to figure that out. Colby and Anna and I have been on three webinars so far this week. You know, the rules just came out, just started to come out, and they will change. So I think the best course of action for us is going to be to... will change. So, I think the best course of action for us is going to be to sit back and let some of this settle out. So, I don't know the answer to that, Jeff, because, but right now, from what we're learning, we're going to be very limited on how we can spend that money. I hope that loosens up, or there will be a lot of that money not getting spent all around this country.
Well, the reason why I ask is because we've received monies at least twice, COVID stimulus packages, and both of those times, money was directed towards nonprofits.
Right. We received CDB, what was CDBG COVID money, and we got it in two tranches, and both together added up a little over, I think around 900,000.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and you're right, that all went to-
Nonprofits.
To nonprofits, yes.
A number of these that are on our list tonight, I know, Community Clinic, Returning Home, Compassion House, I don't know which, you know, which, all of them. But, so there's also a possibility that 21 million may again be some direction towards nonprofits as well.
From what we've learned so far, that's going to be an eligible expense. The issue we're concerned about is we don't have the personnel, from what we've heard so far, on the auditing and the, I mean, it sounds, it sounds more stringent than what we do with CDBG money now. And I don't know if we're going to, if that's going to be a realistic option.
There's no guarantee, is what you're saying. There's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee.
And there may be more COVID money coming through CDBG. We still have not heard anything-
Separate from the stimulus package money that they're 21 million?
It would, yes, it would be-
Yes and no. It could come either way, I think.
It would probably be a part, from what we're hearing, it would probably be a part of the infrastructure bill if that ever comes around.
Yeah. And HUD's money, if it comes through, HUD comes with very tight requirements, which is why we use it the way we did before, because that's the only way we could, we could meet the requirements for that use of money as CDBG COVID money.
And of course, that'd be basically the same, you know, caveat on that, Kevin, that, you know, can't rely on this from year to year, obviously, because it seems like it's a one-time deal. But it does look like there's a possibility at least of other monies being available at some point this year. Possibility.
Whatever you think the possibility is coming out of Washington. I don't know, anybody knows the true answer to that yet, so.
Since you touched on that, and this is not to argue this particular motion one way or the other, but there, we're also working hard to identify where other pots of money are. The rescue plan sent out a lot of money to the state, it sent out a lot of money to the county, all the counties, it sent out money to certain federal agencies that also will have pots of money to distribute through grants. So, there's a lot to figure out here. And it's going to be the headache that keeps on giving, but-
But it's a good headache.
It's a good headache. It's a good headache. We just, we want to be able to utilize it, and we don't know yet how much we're going to be able to, so.
But that's all speculation, and what we're sure of is what we're getting this.
Sure of what we're talking about tonight, you bet.
This is our entitlement money that comes every year because we are an entitlement city. This won't change except for maybe the amount.
You know, Mike mentioned our track record and a reason we do so well receiving CDBG money. And I don't know if it was a factor or not, but I know that CDBG criteria was used to determine what cities get of the rescue plan that Jeff and I, that Jeff brought up.
And what was-
We have the most, we have the most rescue plan money coming, the second most in the state behind Little Rock.
What was the total amount that we distributed to the nonprofits with these two distributions?
It would have been right around 900, Dean, isn't that close?
900,000?
Yeah.
One was 445, one was 478.
Okay. And what's the difference in allocation of spending? Like, that was specific to something compared to-
CV, CV and CV3 all went to nonprofits.
Those were part of the CARES Act.
Yeah, with what restrictions compared to what's before us now?
HUD basically stated that to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. That's what their tieback was, and we had to follow that. Is it to prevent, prepare for, or respond to the coronavirus? And the way we looked at it, and with the council, was going to the nonprofits was the best way to do it because they're severely impacted by the pandemic.
And they have to report on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, how that money has actually gone directly to people who qualify as low and moderate income. So, we get all of that information back. Dean has a book about this thick, and that's what HUD will come and look at when they do come to audit.
Well, the point being, the amount that we have in the CDBG budget now does not compare to the amount of money we've already distributed as a result of the stimulus money that we had, the 900,000 we've distributed already.
That's totally separate from what we're talking about here.
But it's already been distributed to these nonprofits.
As soon as it came in, we got it out as quickly as possible so they could use it. You're not supposed to keep the money more than three days?
Three days.
We try really hard. It's supposed to be gone in three days.
We've got about three years on this rescue plan. I mean, it's a good thing.
CDBG money, you got three days to dispense it, or they'll, you know, you can have some excuses, but we try not to do that. When we draw down the money, we're ready to pay it out. That's just the way it works. And even sometimes the city will float it for us if the drawdown doesn't come through Washington when it's supposed to, because it all has to go through the Federal Reserve. Nothing's done on paper, it's all electronic, so.
Well, I'm about to take, I asked Denise to call the roll here, and I want to thank all the nonprofits represented here, and you came, and you've all said it, you recognize that we have done a lot and will continue to do a lot. So, however this vote goes, please don't take it as, if it's not, if it's for the 10% cap, please don't take that as the, I know I'm speaking for the council here, as saying that we don't value what you're doing for our community. So, there are just always choices to make, so. All right? Any other comments? This is on the 10% cap on Ms. Councilman Overton's motion. Roll call.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
No.
Harriman?
No.
Fujirus?
No.
How?
No.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Bales four to three. Is there another motion?
Make a motion that this is spent at the 13.5% distributed nonprofits.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions before we vote? We've probably already covered it all, so. Okay, Denise.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
No.
Lawson?
No.
Mayor, it's four to three, and you have the authority to cast the fifth.
I'll vote to approve, so.
Carry's five-three, the 13.54%.
Thank you. We will get this submitted to HUD by the end of the week. I think our head deadline is Friday or Monday. Oh, we got till June 12th. Oh, we got plenty of time. We got till June 12th, but we will submit it then.
All right. Thank you all. Let's see, Rand, Kevin, do you have anything else? You don't, I don't believe.
No, that concludes the CDBG committee.
Move to item 10, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations, and Patsy is already there and ready. So, Patsy?
The first item then is a request to rezone property. It is actually 6.3 acres because it's all the tracts that the city owns at the end of McCola, from Agricultural District A1 to Medium High Density Multi-Family Residential District MF-16. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. Title of the ordinance reads in ordinance, submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Medium High Density Multi-Family Residential District MF-16 and declaring an emergency. And the reason we have it on the agenda tonight with the emergency clause is there is a pending application for funding of a project on this that needs to be submitted so we know whether we can move forward with this or not.
Were all the discussions on S F Planning Commission positive that we had?
The only really question we had was what was going to happen with the community garden that's there now. And we discussed at the time, we need to find a place to relocate it. They have a shed and some equipment and stuff that will need to be relocated. Does project move forward? They probably will still be able to use it this year because we're not, it won't move fast enough to be able to do it here. But that's the only comment we heard.
So, we're looking to sell this property. Is that correct?
Well, we're looking to make this property available for the project, for a project. Whether it is donated or sold is yet to be determined. You'll see later on in the agenda, there is an option for someone to purchase it, for a group to purchase it and donate it. We wanted to make sure all of the options were available as we move forward with this project.
I guess what, the only thing I'm wondering is if we're rezoning, what if that doesn't go through? What if that doesn't happen?
It's, I think, I wouldn't vote for this rezoning if I were you unless I thought it was a compatible zoning for the area, and I think it is.
Yeah, it still is as far as that's concerned, but the zoning of the property has to be correct before the application will be considered.
If this project fell through, Jeff-
It's not going to be sold. The city still owns it. You can come back and rezonate to whatever you want to.
Or we could sell it to another project. I mean, you know, if this project doesn't pan out, so.
There is other multifamily in the area. I think I went one slide too many already. That seems to be my key for doing things, is going one slide too many.
Went the wrong way.
And I don't have a backwards button on this one. But if you'll see, there is property to the east of it that has been rezoned to MF-16 right down here, just off of this picture. These are multifamily. They were allowed to go in in a C2 zone, when we allowed multifamily in the C2. There is some additional to the, to the west of this, this MF-4. So, we have a lot of multifamily going in that area already. It's shown on the land use plan to be commercial. Quite honestly, I don't think we're ever going to see this develop as a commercial stronghold. So, multifamily provides that buffer between the industrial and the, what residential there is in that area.
We're voting-
The colors don't show up very well because of the green background.
We're voting later on for the resolution for the, yeah, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
This is just for the rezoning.
Right.
I'm over the ordinance pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions?
I would like to-
Yes, ma'am. Give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Bethra Flowers, and I am at 405 Sisters Avenue, just off of Powell in Springdale. So, I'm going to read this to you so I don't forget everything. Okay. So, I'm a passionate gardener and a producer at heart with the aspiration to create opportunities and learning experiences through the gardening activities that I desire to offer my community. I have always wanted to be a part of a community that is built around mutual work and interaction, which is what I feel the community garden provides the opportunity to create. I see opportunities all around us, our communities all around us crumbling due to a lack of communal space, to engage in such activities such as gardening, for food security, therapy and the peaceful interactions with the earth and the plants and all of its processes, and the interaction of other brothers and sisters with a like interest. I have lived in apartments most of my life with little to no access to land for appropriate gardening activities. I am currently a participant in the Section 8 Housing Program and currently receiving SNAP benefits, which I often use to increase my household's food security. I was given permission to garden on this plot by the city in the fall of last year. So, since then, I have personally invested over 800 in time, energy, resources to develop this plot, which to my consternation, I've been informed, will be developed. It sounds like not very soon, but looking forward to that. I've only just begun to establish the fertility on this plot, which takes at least two or three years to develop. I have not been made aware of any other such spaces set aside for this type of activity. There may be other spaces in Springdale, but I'm not aware of them. In my opinion, this is not a sustainable development unless such provisions can be established in and around these apartment developments. I do understand the need for more housing in this region as I have recently moved into this area from Fayetteville, which is becoming overcrowded and priced me out of the housing opportunities there. One thing that Fayetteville does have are many of these gardens that are provided for the residents to kind of de-stress and provide certain resources for their household. So, one of the questions that I'd like to ask is, what is Springdale's active plan on establishing or protecting such basic needs for such spaces like this for its residents? And can we be a sustainable community without food security and safe community interaction? Where do I go from here to establish a relatively permanent food garden as I have very limited resources to pick up and start another plot, which is then again subject to development? I'm afraid if we remain shortsighted about this issue, we will be creating a very unsustainable and stressful community environment for the very near future as the population in this area continues to expand. If my current plot is unsalvageable with this project, can some sort of conditions be applied to the purchase of this property where these issues are satisfactorily addressed and worked out to the benefit of the residents by supporting gardening activities into the future security of Springdale? So, please permit my thoughts and concerns that I've expressed be seriously considered in both the purchase or the rezoning or anything that pertains to this property. Thank you.
Thank you. We will, we certainly will work with you to find other suitable city property for community gardens. I'm a big fan, and I think, and of course, it doesn't have to be city property either. There are many private property owners who would probably do well if they, if they just thought about it to allow something on their land. And so, but we'll encourage that, and if this goes through. And I also think, I'm not going to say too much here because I can't, but I think you're going to be very pleased and encouraged by some other efforts around the, around the issue of food security close by, that are in the works, we're being told. So, that would be very good, too, and right along with some of your concerns.
Mayor, we did at one time have some community gardens at some of the schools.
Right.
And the schools were having trouble getting people to take care of them during the summer, you know, after school was out. And so, there may be some of those locations that could be opened back up because-
Schools, churches, I think those are great options. But the city has some other property, too. Oh. Any other comments or questions? We do have a motion and a second to approve. Okay.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
With the ordinance emergency clause, carry 7-0.
The next item on the agenda is a replat of Lot 7, Block 4 of Howard Acres subdivision. This one lot is being divided into two lots. The planning commission reviewed this. Replat recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads in ordinance, accepting the replat of Lot 7, Block 4, Howard Acres subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
What's the difference between a replat and a lot split?
Lot splits are done sometimes, but they're not tracked well through the county system. And so, we have tried, if it's a part of a subdivision, it has to be replatted. And what we've kind of gone to over the years is an informal plat process so that it gets filed in the county assessor's records and gets picked up as a land changes going through. But this one was already a subdivision, so it has to be replatted.
Other questions? Comments? Okay. Denise?
Do we, yeah. Was there any issues at Planning Commission over this?
No.
Okay. I make a motion that it pass?
Second.
Okay, we gave a motion and a second. Now, we can vote. Are there any other questions? Okay, Denise.
How?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Ujirous?
Yes.
Carries six zero, has an emergency clause.
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Ujirous?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Emergency clause carries six zero.
The next item on the agenda is the final plat for the Sam's Club addition. Um, this actually was, the improvements and stuff were done several years ago when Sam's was built. Uh, at the time, I think Sam's Club decided they weren't going to final platted. They weren't sure exactly what were they were going to do with all the property that's around it. They have since moved forward, we've got a large-scale development plan on one of the lots and they're ready to finalize the, uh, final plat. The streets were built to city standards, they have green signs on them, we've assumed they were city streets all along, but the actual paperwork that wasn't done, wasn't filed. The act, the only street that will remain a private street is the, the, the street on the south side of Sam's Club, and it's to remain that way until they decide what to do with the other lots, which they will have to come in and replat. Planning Commission reviewed this request and, uh, this, uh, final plat recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting new addition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas to be known as Sam's Club addition, a subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas and declaring an emergency."
So you're saying Members Lane will not be a part of this?
It will be a recognized private street. It will not be dedicated to the city for the city to take over maintenance of it at this time. And when and if that comes forward, we'll have to determine if we want to take it whenever that time comes.
So if this were to pass, then we're responsible for Sam's Club Place, I guess, and Matthias Drive?
I think we've assumed, we have been all along, because they were built to city streets, they have green signs on them, we all thought, but when we started going back through the paperwork, we couldn't find any place where it actually got approved, so that's where we are. It actually came up because we have a large-scale development plan for Burger King, which is in that lot just to the east of, uh, the, uh, Sam's fueling station, and we, we started looking for the paperwork to get that. It's when we found it hadn't actually been filed, so that's where we are.
Oh. So if, if they are city streets, are they going to use Members Lane as their heavy, heavy traffic area for their-
That's the way it was established when it came in, that's where their truck traffic comes in and out of. It wasn't designed for truck traffic to use the other one because all of their doctor's stuff were on that end. And it was built with heavy-duty asphalt too, for that kind of truck traffic, yeah.
I move the ordinance pass.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, further questions or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Ujirous?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Lawson? Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Ujirous?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item 11, Police and Fire Committee Chairman Brian Powell, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we met, uh, last committee meeting, and we have two, an ordinance and a resolution coming before you. Uh, both were forwarded for recommendation approval. Uh, this one that were before us now is an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for purchase of work-ready fitness assessment. And, uh, Chief is here to, uh, uh, comment on, or to get us up to speed from the last committee meeting.
Thank you, sir. Basically what this was is, if you remember during the actual budget hearings, we talked about hiring a company to come in and do not only physical assessments, but mental assessments, um, helping with that wellness and also with dietary, um, issues as well. We picked this company out, and this is the one that, uh, has done tremendous work for us, personalized each one for every individual in the organization.
I move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further questions or comments for the chief before we vote? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Ujirous?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Has an emergency clause?
Does.
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Yes.
Ujirous?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution that was forwarded with recommendation approval. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor and the, uh, city clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city of Springdale and the city of Fayetteville and Washington County, and this is concerning our AWINS system that we're using, Chief.
That's correct. Basically what this is doing is, is as you all remember, Washington County, um, proposed the sales tax to actually move all of Washington County into the AWINS system. This just ties us all together and gives us some extra redundancy that we don't have. Um, it, it certainly doesn't cost us anything, but certainly allows us, um, that redundancy that we currently don't have. Although we've got plenty of redundancy, this just adds to that.
And again, this is just this resolution if any city decides to bow out they can.
That's correct.
They maintain their own equipment, so.
Yes, everyone maintains their own equipment. Um, obviously at the state sites, which is all the tower sites, state maintains that. Um, but all of our equipment and everything that we've purchased as a city still is ours. So if we decide to get out of it, we get to maintain that and continue on.
Is there a cost associated with this?
There is none.
None. I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other questions? Okay, Denise?
Ujirous?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson? Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, item 12, Finance Committee Chairman Jeff Watson, Jeff?
Thank you. The first item that was forwarded from the Finance Committee has to do with purchase of property for possibility of future location of a fire department, fire station. And, uh, the title to that resolution is a resolution authorizing the purchase of property located at 3377 West Huntsville Avenue, Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. That resolution was forwarded from the Finance Committee with recommendation for approval.
I've got to correct one thing that I, I got wrong, and Kevin, it was in answer to your question about the trail access. This property doesn't go back all the way to where that street's going to go through. And I wanted to be sure you all, I mean, I'm, I still support the purchase of this property, but I wanted to be sure I cleared that up because I, I spoke in error, uh, at committee, that, uh, the property does not go all the way back to the future harbor, Emma.
If the appraisal doesn't go through, will you come back at that point? Does, uh, because that's one of the caveats in this.
Yeah, yeah, if the appraisal's lower than, than what you're authorizing with this resolution, then we would come back and, if the, if the seller agrees to the lower amount, then we would, we would have to come back, yeah.
So I contacted the mayor this last week, and after sleeping on it, I had some reservations about doing it. I'm not totally against it by any means. Um, living very close to that location, and I know you guys did a study and, and all, traffic is just so bad. I know the school's getting ready to change the entrance, but, uh, I think whenever we connect Emma, that'll help. Uh, but right now, and who knows when we're going to do this, getting out, depending on how the school lays that out, traffic is terrible in that curve, and I went out there a couple of times this week and, yeah, you could get out, but people, it's, it's going to be tough at times. Um, the other thing that bothered me a little bit was, we've already spent money to remodel, and of course, we didn't know what the future held, uh, but to spend more money now, and not that we can't get our money back selling the property where we're at, but there's no definite plan, obviously, we don't, we're spending a lot of money, and I'm just not sold on the site, and I guess to be honest, I like our site where we're at better. So after sleeping on it, I was for it, but I got reservations now, just to be clear.
Chief, you want to address any of that, or?
Sure. Um, you know, I had the same concerns on the, on the actual, um, traffic, and I had the same concerns when we built Station 7 out there by Harbor and Hellstern Middle School. Um, that's turned out to be zero problem out there. In fact, um, that, if you go out there during the days that they're having school and we need to get in and out, there's plenty of room for us to exit. Um, I think once that people realize that we're there, they'll easily give us access and we'll get in and out. And I do believe that by the time we get that station built, they'll have the pattern to the traffic for that school changed, and it won't affect us nearly to the level that it may right now.
From the front on, Guten Son.
Yes.
And they hope to have another access, if we get Harbor built, they hope to have another access out onto the new street.
That's correct.
Um, I do think, uh, yeah, traffic does back up there sometimes, and that, that's, you know, we don't have that with the other site, with the current site, but I do think sightlines are a lot better with this site.
They are.
Um, as far as, as far as y'all seeing the traffic and the traffic seeing you.
The other issue-
Mike's right, it does back up from time to time.
The other issue to address is, is obviously the location we have, and it's a small station. We have spent money to have an architect look at, at the actual remodel of that station. We haven't done that because the cost came in, in my opinion, way too high. I didn't want to spend that money knowing that that station was not going to fulfill the needs of this organization for several years to come. Probably as a, as a short fix, that remodel was a good idea, but in the long term, that station doesn't offer us enough room to do what we are forecasting we're going to need out of that station.
It's one of your busiest, that is your busiest-
It is, it is the second busiest station, actually the first busiest station for the ambulance, um, second busiest for the actual engine, and they're just a few hundred calls behind Station 1 currently.
So that does bring up some issues as far as trying to rebuild on the same site, having to do something for your busiest station while you're, and, and Mike, you mentioned timing, and that is a, that is a question mark for sure. We don't know if this would be part of the next bond issue, we don't know if, you know, depending on how our revenues continue to go, y'all may decide to build it earlier. Uh, because this is one station we can build and not have to staff, not have to get any extra staff. Um, I just think long run, it's, it's going to save the city money, and, uh, so that, that's mainly why I support it, but, but, uh-
The only other consideration, Mayor, and I know we've talked about it in the council meetings and stuff before, is that we can't move that station very far without creating some-
Right.
-real issues for us on response times. So the ability to find locations that will fit our need, that are big enough, that will also allow us to still respond within those response times, it's pretty limited, and this one happens to do that, so that's probably one of the bigger reasons that we're looking at this actual site.
Okay, other questions for Chief?
So during one of the previous meetings, there was a conversation about, would there ever be a chance of adding a stoplight or a signal light for, in this area? And I don't remember the question being answered, with it not being a state highway and controlled.
Like warnings?
Yeah.
Like a warning, okay. Uh, we've got that at Station, or we, at, at least at one time, we had that at Station 5.
Station 5 actually still has a stoplight. That was the last one that the Department of Transportation said they would allow us to have.
Okay. I think really with the, with the vision of the, of the engine, with the lights going, I don't think that's going to be an issue on this, really. That's, that's just my opinion, I mean, never would hurt, but, uh, but that, but we could do that here because this is not controlled by the state any longer.
Right.
That, that would be something we could consider if we needed to do it.
Just looking at this picture, it reminds me of rainbow curve up in Bentonville, where you can see fire department coming from the west and coming right out there, and they got a stoplight and controlled. And, but with it being a stoplight too, there's cars all parked in that, because I've seen that two weeks ago, where then the trucks couldn't get past them, but it, just a warning light, I think, could really help there.
When you mentioned a stoplight, we've got that at Don Tyson, and y'all deal with that?
Yes.
Uh, especially when, when people are going, probably pre-COVID, when more people were working at Tyson, but, but, uh, I don't know, I'd have to think hard, and we'd have to get a study done whether we wanted a signal there. That's pretty close to a traffic signal, you know, and, but flashing lights would sure be a possibility.
Yeah, I stated that wrong at first, I meant warning.
But Chief, the only ingress and egress would be out of Huntsville. Uh, what about through those two neighborhood streets that are on the map right now?
You, you can go that way, but we, we try to stay away from those actual residential areas as much as we can.
If though, to Mike's concern, if, if that was backed up-
Yes.
And y'all were heading west-
Yes.
Or north, you could, you could use one of these other streets.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's no different than going down Allen or-
It's, it's not.
Downtown.
Yeah.
Okay. What's your pleasure, Council?
I'm going to move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further comments or questions? Okay, Denise?
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Lawson? Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Ujirous?
Yes.
Carries five two. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chief.
Second item forwarded from the Finance Committee had to do with the, um, property that we dealt with earlier tonight during the planning, um, on the, uh, authorization of the mayor to execute, uh, it looks like, uh, for the purchase of that property out there on McCullough. The title to that resolution reads, "A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an option agreement for the purchase of real estate on property owned by the city of Springdale." I guess while I was stuttering, I was looking at the quotation marks that were added, uh, following our meeting. That resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
This, this gives the, the potential buyer time to do their due diligence and try and see how the project comes together, so. But it, it, it demonstrates our willingness to sell, so.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Ujirous?
Yes, ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Carries seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Hey, the good news is if we, if this sale goes through at some point, well, we didn't spend any money tonight, because it's about as even, it's about what we just are voted to spend on the fire property, so.
Third I would-
I like the way you look at it.
Third item forwarded from the Finance Committee has to do with the execution of a construction contract, uh, on Park Street project. The title to that resolution is, "A resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract and a change order for Park Street project number 18BPS13." This resolution was forwarded from the Finance Committee with recommendation for approval.
Ryan's here, if you have any questions?
Good evening, Council, yeah.
Good evening.
Do you have any questions on this?
I've fallen behind here.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I think it took everybody a while to get to it and, and remember what, what, what the particulars on it. Um, any other comments or questions? Do we have anybody else in the room? Needs to comment? We don't have anybody else in the room, really, except for staff and, uh, press. Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Ujirous?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carries seven zero.
Thank you all.
Fourth item from the Finance Committee had to do with- Fourth item from the Finance Committee had to do with the approval from the Airport Commission to, to construct a new airport hangar on, on the airport property. The title to that resolution reads, "A resolution expressing the intent of the City of Springdale, Arkansas to construct a new airport hangar at the Springdale Municipal Airport." There was a lot of discussion about this construction of the new hangar. I thought, and it's not mentioned on the agenda, I thought the Finance Committee forwarded that with recommendation for approval, but I'm pretty sure that's what happened.
I understand.
I thought so, too. We didn't have a resolution prepared.
Right.
And the, the, there has been a change-
Okay.
To the resolution, Wyman and I were on the phone today with, was that the state FAA guy? Is that who that was? They had, they asked that something be added to the resolution that you have in your packet.
Okay.
And it's one phrase in the, in the, now, therefore. Do you have a copy of it?
Yes, we do.
Okay. It has the words "with construction" to begin within 90 days of this resolution.
Is that doable?
I have been assured it is.
But that was not our understanding. Our understanding was, this is contingent upon getting that grant for that road access, and construction would not start until-
They needed, they needed this language to give us a better chance to get the grant.
Okay.
Because they don't want to, they don't want to build, they don't want to approve a grant for infrastructure and then the building not get built.
By the same token, I don't want us to build a building with that.
I don't think it changes that, though.
And I made that point as well, but, and, and I don't believe we'll be building the building-
Well, the under-
Get the grant.
Well, the understanding that it's the council's prerogative to, to cancel this resolution if in fact that grant is not forthcoming prior to start construction on this building.
Wyman, if we, if we have this 90 days in the, in the resolution and the council approves it, we'll know when whether the grant for the infrastructure has been approved, the FAA grant. I think we'll know by next month. Is that correct? It is a, it is a conundrum, and Mike, I made the same point you did to the FAA.
Well, with that-
Yeah, so, so-
As long as the council has the understanding, we can, we can revoke this resolution prior to any construction being started if this grant is not forthcoming for this road.
We'll have time to do that before we actually start construction on the, on the, or before we approve construction on the-
Before, before the council spends any money for construction, we'll be assured we'll have the, the grant approval for the road.
Right, and we are-
If that's our understanding, I will move that we, this resolution pass with those conditions.
Second. Jeff, did you have a comment? You said you didn't think-
I agree, I agree with what Mike said.
Okay.
This is, this is, this was at the direction or at the advice of the FAA representative to give the best chance to get the grant on hang. But I, like, to address Mike's concern, I think we can get that all figured out and know that before we actually spend any money on the infrastructure.
And just, I was under the understanding that there's a waiting list for people, for these hangars. And so if, if that is true, and the way that they brought it to us, it doesn't sound like it's going to be that, that big of an issue. But I do appreciate Councilman Overton for his words on there and to protect us, protect the city.
I will say that the, the gentleman we talked to today made it very clear, they, he really would love to see us get this. He just didn't, he said that the board traditionally does not approve a grant for a hangar, or, or, a grant for the infrastructure, unless the hangar is-
Built.
Or, or being built.
Just for my edification, when we claim rent, when we get rents from this building, where does that money go to?
Goes right over there in Neil Johnson's pocket.
Goes in his pocket, and we never see it.
It stays with the airport.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we're, so-
James Smith uses it for gas for the truck he doesn't need.
So where's the 700K coming from?
From-
Out of the general fund, and then all rents go back to him?
That's correct.
That sounds like a bad idea.
Not any worse than giving $400,000 out to nonprofits.
It's not really going to him. It's going to the City of Springdale.
Goes to the city's-
It stays with the airport, which obviously is an economic, brings an economic impact-
Oh, absolutely.
To the city. So that's the way we kind of have to look at it.
So we're not receiving any rents back into general fund. It goes into the Airport Commission.
That's right. It's just like anything else that we approve for-
Yeah, we bought, we purchased land last year or a year before on Emma that way also. I mean, that's City of Springdale land, but we don't, we'll see that, but. Any other comments or questions? All right, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
No.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes. Page 61.
Let's see. Okay, that finishes Finance Committee. So next two are, are city attorneys. Vernish?
Thank you. First one is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a portion of utilities. The City of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas sets the public hearing for June the 8th. Someone's wanting to vacate 176 square feet of a utilities for a swimming pool.
Will the resolution be adopted?
Second.
Motion to second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Roll call.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Page 70. Last item is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within, within the City of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 309 Park Street.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Does have an emergency clause. It doesn't have, it said in the title, but it does have an emergency clause.
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yeah.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Page 70.
All right, thank you. Item 15. Any comments from council?
One, Mayor, I'll be quick. I had the opportunity to go out to Tyson Park the other night, and I know we have turf fields out at George, but if you hadn't seen the kids' field, Ed and his guys have taken care of that are grass, those things, when you walk in from above and look down, Ed and his staff need to be commended how well-maintained those parks are.
I think they're the-
I know everybody talks about the turf, but-
They're the best fields I've seen.
Man, those kids' fields are unreal.
And they, you know, they, they got an award for that either last year or the year before, a state award. And, and even if you go out to George, to the turf fields, I mean, you know, you got the infield and the dirt that are turf, but you look at that outfield grass, and it's just as, I mean, it's as green and pretty as that, as that artificial grass. It really, really looks good. They do a great job. Thanks for bringing that up, Mike. Anybody else?
I have a question about calendar, and I know that we've talked about it. So the first week in June, the first Monday is on, on a Tuesday, or the first Tuesday. So it's putting our committee and council meeting on the same week. So do we move one?
Traditionally, we do. But if we move this one to, back to a Monday, it's on-
Memorial Day?
We've, we've, council, before, you have done, I know, none of us like to have the council meeting the same week as the committee. So we have moved committee before to Tuesday or Wednesday of the week before. Yeah, but you'll have planning committee. Well, yeah, so it almost has to be Wednesday or Thursday. But it really helps us get the agenda ready if it's, if it would be Wednesday instead of Thursday. If y'all don't want to have it on the same week.
That'd be the Wednesday bef- before-
Be the Wednesday af-
After Memorial Day?
Wednesday after.
Yeah, I won't be here on the 2nd.
You won't be here on Wednesday?
Look at the calendar here.
Well, the meeting would run a lot smoother if we do it on June 2nd.
I second that.
On the what? 7.
Night that it's supposed to be.
Oh, the night it would have been, yeah.
Those perfect storms where it falls on a holiday.
I say we do it on the 2nd.
Well, you've also got options to do it the end of the week before, you know, 27th, 28th. But you've already moved that we do it on the 2nd, and we've got a second for the 2nd. Any other discussion?
Okay, Denise?
Do we vote? No, we don't vote. We just do-
Let's just do it.
Thumbs up. Okay, we're going to have it on the 2nd. What am I doing? I'm even talking. This is your deal. Okay, we'll put it down for the 2nd.